Hi, everybody. My name is Paul Kachar. I'm the Chair of the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals. Thanks for coming tonight. We will, we have a brief meeting, and we start every meeting with a call to order, which I just did, and now if we would all just stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you all. Now comes a lot of road stuff. I've got a handful of announcements, so feel free to check out, go do your dishes, whatever it is you want to do. Here I go. We have, the first is the supplemental announcement regarding COVID and remote, which I will speed through. Pursuant to Governor March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's July 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Town of North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals will be conducted by a remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and our parties with a right and or requirement to attend the North Andover website, wwwnorthandoverma.gov. For this meeting only, members of the public who wish to watch the meeting may do so on their television by tuning to North Andover GovCam Comcast Channel 8, or Verizon Channel 26, or online at www.northandovercam.org. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the Town of North Andover website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive records of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. If the public would like to participate in public hearings, please email your question or comment prior to or even during the meeting to our zoning administrator, Jennifer Battersby. Her email address is battersby@northandoverma.gov. J.B.A.T.T.E.R.S.B.Y. at northandoverma, all one word, northandoverma.gov. The question or comment will be read during the proceedings and responded to accordingly. Copy of the application supporting documents are on file on the Zoning Board of Appeals, 120 Main Street, North Andover, Massachusetts, and may be viewed on the Town of North Andover website at www.northandoverma.gov. Next, we have a handful of ground rules. Everybody knows that how unsatisf-, well, anybody who's been to these things knows how unsatisfying and cumbersome this technological medium is, but it's the best that we have, so we're going to do the best that we can. Thank you all for your patience and understanding. I also need to say that we are using some phone lines here. Yes, it's a Google Meet. Yes, there are video cameras, but there are a number of people that are calling in, myself being one of them. This is being recorded so that we don't run into any wiretapping issues. This is a public meeting of the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals. If you've called in, you are being recorded. Next, when you are not speaking, please mute yourselves. The Google Meet/ unmute is star six, and then after that, you can use the mechanical mute/unmute on your various phones. And we ask for us to mute ourselves because paper shuffling, clicks of your keyboard or mouse, even the breathing, it all adds up, and it makes the rest of the hearing indecipherable. On the other hand, when you are speaking, then please get closer to the microphone. The closer you are to the microphone, the clearer you will be, and the less "can you hear me now?" as we will have. Just like before, Google mute/unmute is star six. Once you star six from your phone, then you can use your mute/unmute on your phone. Last procedure, there are a couple of matters of procedures that I try to announce in order to demystify the votes of the board, because some folks of the uninitiated get a little bit anxious. All motions that we made are in the affirmative. That means that the motion is made to grant the relief. In other words, motions are not made to reject or disapprove. This does not signal that the board's disposition is to grant the relief. It is merely a matter of procedure. Furthermore, variance in special permit matters all require a supermajority to pass. If five members are present and voting, then a matter needs four of those five votes to pass. If only four members are present or voting, the matter needs all four votes to pass. We don't have that problem tonight because we've got a full board, so they'll need four votes out of the five voting members. Anything less than four votes, and that matter is rejected, and then it requires a two-year waiting period before re-filing. So, so ends all of my preliminary announcements. We return to the regular agenda, which is that we have the new public hearing of 1268 Osgood Street and 1274 Osgood Street. So we're going to do those together because they're the same property. They're just different applications, different addresses. And do we have, before we open, Mr. Clerk, I'm going to ask you to naturally to read the notices, but do we have applicant present?
Yes, I am present. Mark Yanowitz for the architectural firm La Gras Yanowitz in file.
Very much, Mark. Is it just you with us tonight?
Correct, just myself.
Okay, that's terrific. All right, then, with that, since we have the applicant, Mr. Clerk, would you mind reading the two notices?
Okay, Paul, you want me to read both notices at the same time?
If you would, please.
Okay, Paul, let's start. Here's the first one. Notice is hereby given that the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing remotely via conference call on Tuesday, April 20, 2021, at 7:30 PM to all parties interested in the petition of Mike Yanowitz, LYF Architects for Property at 1268 Osgood Street, MAP 34, parcel 49, North Andover, Mass. 01845, the B2 zoning district. The applicant is requesting a variance pursuant to Town and North Andover Zoning Bylaws, Section 195-7.4B and Section 195-7.4F, building height in the B2 zoning district for the purpose of allowing a pre-existing commercial building to remain unchanged as to building height specifically. Applicant has requested a relief variance of 1.9 feet. The existing building height is 36.9 feet, and the building height required is 35 feet. Applicants, application and supporting materials are available for review by appointment only at the office of the zoning department located at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Mass. on Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday from the hours of 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM, Tuesday from the hours of 8:00 AM to 5:30 PM, and Friday from the hours of 8:30, Friday from the hours of 8:00 AM to 11:30 AM. By order of the Board of Appeals, D. Paul Carr Jr., Esquire Chairman.
I get you. Thank you, Alan.
You want me to do the second one now?
Yes, please.
Be my pleasure, young man. Notice is hereby given that the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing remotely via conference call on Tuesday, April 20, 2021, at 7:30 PM to all parties interested in the petition of Mike Yanowitz. Am I saying that correctly, sir? I guess no one hears me, right? LYF Architects for Property at 1274 Osgood Street, MAP 34, parcel 49, North Andover, Mass. 01845, in the R2 zoning district. The applicant is requesting a variance pursuant to Town and North Andover Zoning Bylaws, Section 195-7.4, building height in the B2 zoning district for the purpose of allowing a pre-existing commercial building to remain unchanged as to building height specifically. Applicant has requested a relief variance of 4.2 feet. The existing building height is 39.2 feet. The building height required is 35 feet. Application and supporting materials are available for review by appointment only at the office of the zoning department located at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Mass. on Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday from the hours of 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Tuesday from the hours of 8:00 AM to 5:30 PM, and Friday from the hours of 8:00 AM to 11:30 AM. By order of the Board of Appeals, D. Paul Carr Jr., Esquire Chairman.
It never gets old, Alan. Thank you very much for the dramatic reading of the notice. And now I will ask the applicant, if you would, since we are open, to kind of introduce yourself, your affiliation, and then let us know what's going on with this application. Mr. Yanowitz, we had the applicant. Do we still have the applicant?
I think we might have lost him.
Well, that's happened before. Hopefully he's covered back.
Paul, while in my reading of the application, I asked him if I was pronouncing his name correctly, and there was no reply to that.
We had him.
I don't know what that means to you.
Anyone got a cellphone number?
Let's look in the application. I will call the number that's in the application.
Hey, Paul, I got him on the cellphone right now. This is Paul Hutchins. He's trying to get back on as we speak.
Okay, great.
Give him a couple minutes if you could, and we'll go from there.
Thanks, Paul.
Okay.
Anyone else here crooked?
I've got peepers in the backyard. Does that count?
We can go with it. I have kids crying upstairs.
We need more people on video at these meetings so that we can see cats stroll across the screen.
Did you see that video of the lawyer with the "I'm not a cat"? Hysterical, hysterical.
Serious as a heart attack.
Yeah, I should do that to my dad.
What would you make him? What filter would you use? The little elf ears? Little sunglasses?
I mean, it's a toss-up between a pig, an elephant. What else would be comical? A chicken.
I hope he's not listening. Ordinarily, I would take a recess while we wait, but seems kind of silly in this environment.
Hey, Paul, this is Paul again. His Wi-Fi is down, so he's just going to call in, and he's trying to get that in right now. Just got to call.
All right.
Okay.
Phone works.
What would we do without our building inspector?
Call a piper.
You know, that and Jen, like the glue that holds us together.
I give more credit to Jen than myself, so.
Just wait. One day you shall be Chair, and you'll see exactly how much glue those two apply to this. I would never get anything in on time without Jen. I don't think this is going to do much for our Nielsen ratings, that's for sure.
Some people might like the silence.
Oh, I see an alert. Sounds like, yeah.
Okay, sorry so much.
All right, you've made it back.
Yes, my apologies. I don't know. My home Wi-Fi just went home. We had to reboot it.
And do everyone. So, we have opened the hearing, read the notices. Why don't you now, for the record, introduce yourself, and then tell us what's going on with the application.
Thank you very much. This is Mark Yanowitz. I'm Principal of LYF Architects, based in Andover, Massachusetts, One Elm Square in Andover. First, wanted to start by thanking you all for taking this special meeting. I had done everything per timing of the application to be on last week's meeting, but unfortunately, the Eagle Tribune's computers went down, and we did not have the proper posting 14 days before the hearing, so I was unable to get on last week. So, thank you again for your time this evening in doing this special meeting. I also want to start by admitting this was a mistake. The elevation violation having the buildings too high was by no means intentional. We received no additional benefit from making the buildings too high, and it was an honest mistake that we've done internal review within the firm to understand how this happened. The plans were designed under the previous firm, JD La Gras and Associates. This past July, myself and Architect Ken File completed an asset acquisition of JD La Gras and Associates. But a couple years ago, when the project was designed, we had multiple staff involved. We were transitioning to new CAD software. There was, it appears that there was some small mistakes in drafting and coordinating building sections with elevations, and also in just measuring the height elevations of the four corners. I'll point out that the building height is the average of the four corners of the grade base elevations, and through the combination of factors, this Our company has reviewed this condition, and we've set forth internal reviews so that this would never happen again. So, I wanted to start off by saying this was a mistake, and it was unintentional. Now, there are a number of factors to consider in this review and to determine whether our variance application remains in harmony with the spirit and intent of the zoning bylaw. And I'll start with really kind of reviewing the Planning Board's site plan review process that had us address, excuse me. Sounds like my dog wants to participate in the hearing. So, the Planning Board in the site plan review process heard from Butters across Osgood Street. And just bring it out as kind of background information, the residential buildings behind our commercial buildings on the same site were granted a waiver of 55 foot in height. So, they got a special waiver to increase the height, get an additional story. It's four-story buildings, and some of the Butters across Osgood Street were concerned of the sightlines, both to and from these residential buildings. So, it was a discussion point during the site plan review that it would be beneficial to have our commercial buildings essentially block the viewpoint of the residential towers behind the commercial buildings, both to and from the site. And that was a request by Butters, and so that was, it kind of led to us studying those view angles and purposefully kind of developing pitched roof designs within the commercial buildings as part of the building program. Also, during the site plan review process, the Planning Board felt the preference, really, to encourage internal accessibility within the site. It's a mixed-use development. They wanted accessible pedestrian access from the residential buildings behind to the commercial buildings at kind of adjacent to Osgood Street. Now, this preference, as expressed during the site process, ended up lowering the internal grades of the site. Really, if any of you knew the site beforehand, the site really dropped off towards the rear of the property, and they ended up elevating the residential buildings. But to make that accessibility, that pedestrian accessibility within the site, it was determined that the best way to do it was to lower the grade of the commercial buildings. And this was really done in response to the Planning Board stated preference again to make it an accessible site for both the public who is visiting, but really for the residents that were on the site as well. And this was a significant kind of site design development, which is what you see today. The commercial buildings are significantly lower than Osgood Street, which is really the public right of way. And this fact really, I feel, is a major factor in kind of evaluating this height variance of the building height. I provided a number of documents for you in the application process, and the one I would call attention to now is really the elevation grade differences document, which shows the site plan. It's a grading plan that was used by our civil engineer, and it shows the grade elevations of both Osgood Street and the commercial buildings.
Would you please identify which of the documents we should be looking at, please, so we can follow along?
Yes. It was, so it's a, it's a site plan. It's a grading site plan. I'm not sure the printed document. I called it an elevation grade differences document on electronic version, but it's the only one that's really a site plan with red lettering on it.
All right. There is, yes, there is one with red identifications of the buildings here. 1280, 1274, 1268.
Correct, correct. That document. Now, and what, then we showed perpendicular dash lines from the building corners. It's showing three different commercial buildings, but the two buildings we're talking about is 1268 and 1274. And if you take the grade differences from those corners, go perpendicular to the street, you'll notice that 1268, the corners of the property are approximately 6.5 feet, six and a half feet lower than the street. Then, as you move to 1274, that's a seven, there's a seven-foot height difference from the street elevation to the building corners. Equally, if you, at the top of that page, there's kind of site elevations showing the outline of the buildings and a red dash line showing the sloped outline of Osgood Street, which basically shows it as approximately, you know, one, Osgood Street being almost one story above the base of those buildings. And this is significant differential difference. Also, on that document, it can be seen through the elevate, you know, the topography and the elevation grades of the site. The elevations continue to fall towards the rear of the site. And so, the rear, the grades at the rear of the building are significantly lower than the grades at the front of the building. And on 1268, the rear left corner of the building is four and a half feet lower than the front right corner. And at 1274 Osgood Street, the grade at the rear left corner is approximately seven feet lower than the front right corner. Again, kind of backing up and pointing out at the beginning of my conversation, the building height elevation is determined by the average of the four grades. So, not only is the front of the building significantly, you know, approximately seven feet lower than the street, the backs of these buildings is even further lower. Again, four and a half feet at 1268 Osgood and seven feet lower at greatest difference at 1274 Osgood Street. And with the average of those four corners of the elevation factored in, really outlines kind of our building height violation. In further discussion, as you see at the building elevation drawings, where we show a line drawing through the peaks of the roofs of both buildings, 1268, 1274, the building height elevation, really, the violation that we're speaking of tonight and the reason for this variant application is the peaks of the roofs are encroaching the 35-foot height requirement. And I would contend, although these are violations, and again, it was an honest mistake that they happened, these are not significant in when you are reviewing whether these, this application remains in harmony with the intent of the zoning plan. These sloped roofs, and it could be argued, and I said this in the application, that they are, could be really viewed as architectural features, kind of like a turret is on a residence or other types of roof elevations. In both buildings, we have a structural, a flat structural roof that really effectively is the waterproofing membrane, and the only thing that's needed to structurally make this building handle lateral loads as well as vertical loads. The pitched roofs, again, were designed, you know, really to help minimize the view angles and to give that kind of more New England character that pitched roofs give. So, these are, you know, attic spaces. The peaks of these roofs do not give us any additional benefit. There's no additional square footage or anything, but it is the peaks of these roofs that is the violation. And so, really, in conclusion, I strongly feel that this variant application does remain in harmony with the purpose and intent of zoning bylaw. Because really, as you review this, it remains, the project as it stands, still remains in the character of the same mixed-use project that was approved by Planning Board Site Plan Review and was deemed to have multiple benefits to the town. The Planning Board had requested the commercial buildings limit the sightlines, both to and from the taller four-story residential buildings at the rear of the site. This height violation was not intentional, but I'd also argue that it's not significant, as it's only the peaks of the roof that create the violation. But perhaps really, the most significant aspect of this application is the obvious grade differences that are within the site. Significantly, the grade is lower than Osgood Street, lower than the public right of way, lower than the view from the public. And there's really no adverse impact, no detrimental effect on abutting properties, the community as a whole, and it, I don't, do not feel that under all these circumstances, it is detrimental to accept this application. Thank you, and And, and there's really no adverse impact, no, no detrimental, um, uh, effect on abutting properties, the community as a whole. And, um, it, it, I don't, do not feel that under all these circumstances, um, it is detrimental to accept, um, this application. Thank you, and I'm open to any, answering any questions you may have.
Thank, thank you very much, Mr. Yanowitz. It's always a pleasure when folks come to hearings like having done it before, having submitted all the appropriate documentation. So I'm grateful that you were able to expand upon something that looks so simple and, and in effect is really quite complicated underneath, you know, between the, you know, the original zoning for this was a, you know, addition of warrant at town meeting so that the applicant could, you know, set a whole bunch of, of the zoning standards that it wouldn't have to come to the board. And now the irony of it is, you know, here we are a couple of years later. And then offering an explanation for how it happened, I appreciate that it's an, that it's an honest mistake. And you touched a whole, you know, a whole bunch of the things that we need to touch for the, the impact on the community and it's in harmony and certainly the planning board requests and everything. The, the only thing that I haven't heard, and, and you know, this was part of my original reading of the application, what I didn't hear tonight necessarily enough of perhaps is, you know, what's the underlying hardship here? Because what we have, it looks like we have a zoning violation that comes in after zoning that the applicant itself had already requested. So it's not as though this is a, is a surprise. It is an honest mistake. I hear you, hear you loud and clear. We have an extraordinarily sophisticated, you know, developer and project managers and architects and construction managers and all, all that, that whole bevy of folks that slipped through. All of that might mitigate, but what I need to hear is, um, you know, you know, you know the process here, you know, the decisions after you know what the board has to find. One of the things that we have to find is a hardship, you know, soil shape, topography, or the, you know, that's the big three. There's a financial hardship kind of element in there that sometimes works and oftentimes doesn't. So I guess I would like to hear from the applicant, you know, what's the underlying hardship? Because it appears at a glance, the applicant built it too tall, it was a mistake. That is what we call, you know, you created a hardship yourselves, or the, not necessarily you, Mr. Yanowitz, but the, the applicant, the person that you're representing. This applicant created its own hardship and it's hard for us to find a way to check the box of, you know, finding a hardship. So I'd love to hear your thoughts on that if I could.
Yes, thank you. I, I understand, um, you know, the concept of hardship and, and equally that it, it comes in all shapes and sizes. In, in outlining the history of, of the, the planning board review and the site plan review, um, the hardship in, in this case is a unique site. And, and, and I do feel that, um, it, it qualifies under hardship under, under those conditions, um, when, when a site is unique. And, you know, sometimes it is the shape of the site and, and sometimes it is, um, just particular, you know, natural features of the site and so forth. In, in this case, I feel that we, we have a combination of, of requests from the, from the planning board, which are both to, um, to block the visibility of the commercial buildings, which were granted a, a height waiver and, and were, were, were taller than what would normally be allowed in the zoning district. And we have a request to, to lower the grade to also, um, uh, you know, to make the accessibility features work. And they're, they're kind of working off of each other. And it, it was, you know, um, in the end, you know, there, there, you know, there's, there's always a design solution that you could, you know, change, change a component to, 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 to affect, um, uh, this, the, the request from the planning board or a request from, from an agency to, to, to meet those. And, 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 and in this case, yes, you know, I've admitted the intentional mistake, I mean, the unintentional mistake that, that surrounds, um, you know, why, why I'm here before you today at the, but, but in the end, the other hardship in this case, and probably, you know, the, the most real today is the financial component of what we're facing. And yes, it would be possible to, to, to cut the tops of these peaks off. We have, we have buildings in place. Um, we, uh, we've, we've gotten temporary certificate of occupancies on core and shell of the building, um, on, on the restaurant, um, at, at 1268. There, there's sprinkler systems in those attic spaces. It, it, it's physically possible to cut, um, you know, trim, trim the peaks of these roofs. They, they are truss roofs, so it's structurally difficult, but, but physically possible again. It would, it would cremate, it would create tremendous financial burden on, on, um, on the development team. And, um, and, and it would, I would contend it would could change the character of the buildings to make that modification and either to, to completely change the pitch roofs to a shallower pitch and/or to, to again flatten off the tops to make it fit within the 35 foot height violation. It would change the character of what it looked like. It would change the character of what was brought before the planning board and, and approved. And, um, it would, it would create, you know, tens if not hundreds of thousands of dollars of financial, um, if, you know, impact on, on whoever was, was deemed responsible to, to, uh, to pay for that. And, um, so I do feel in this case, the financial hardship is a real one. And, um, and, and, um, again, that the, um, the application could be justified under the hardship rules of, of the different factors I just brought up. And, and deem that hardship does exist, um, both in the elevate, the uniqueness of the elevate, site elevations as well as the financial considerations so that, um, it, it does remain, accepting the application does remain in, in harmony with the purpose and intent of the zoning bylaw.
But I think I'm hearing you loud and clear that there would be a cost associated with, um, you know, bringing the, bringing the structure into, a bunch of the structures into compliance. So there would be costs, but that doesn't necessarily get us all the way to hardship. Could you identify that? Like what, what, what are, how much are we talking about? If you had to put a, you know, some guys out there with hammers and saws, um, you know, what, what would their bill be at the end of the day?
Um, particularly on building three, um, we're, we're talking well over 200 to $300,000 probably.
I, I'm sorry, I'm just a bit confused. You said 10, 10, 10s of thousands to hundreds of thousands.
No, yeah, I mean, I, I'm thinking it's in the neighborhood of 200 plus thousand dollars.
An expensive mistake.
Yes, yes. And, and would again, I, I feel change the character of what we're looking at.
I'm confused. How did this only affect 1268 and 1274? I mean, it, it sound, at first I was thinking this was just an across the board, you know, someone put the measuring tape too high. But I don't understand how only two of the three buildings are affected. So I mean, I'm assuming that means that 1280 is the 35 feet it's supposed to be.
It's, it, that, that's, there's only a foundation there today. There's only two buildings created in that.
So what is your intent then with 1280? Is your intent with 1280 to do the 35 feet that the planning, that you were allowed?
Well, it, I mean, I, I could ease, we could, because it's not built, it, it would easily be with, under the 35 feet if, if that is desired, um, which, which it would be in compliance. There's only a foundation in place today. Uh, it, there, um, I should mention that the, the planning board actually had a tower on, on, um, 1280 that was 38 feet, six inches at the peak, even though.
What tower? Why don't we see that on the plans you provided us?
Because it's not built. And I mean, it was, it was presented to the planning board and, and there had been, I didn't bring this up because it wasn't in the site plan decision or anything, but, but when we were, when we presented it in front of the planning board, there had been verbal conversations with planning staff to keep the buildings under 40 feet in height. And it, it was our firm's mistake not to verify what, that we need to be under 35 feet, not 40 feet. So building, building at 1280 had a tower that was 38 feet, six inches. It's not built because only the foundation is and, and we've since reviewed and modified that those drawings. This was a couple of years ago again, but then as we permitted, um, the buildings 1268 and 1274, um, we realized it needed to be under 35 feet. We modified the drawings at the time, but we didn't prop, you know, per, per the outline that I started with, there was a series of mistakes that, um, that we didn't catch that, that the peaks of the roofs ended up going higher.
So you're saying the peaks, I just want to make sure I get this right, the peaks of 1268 and 1274? Now, when I look on the elevation grade difference, the, I don't know, the outline for 1268 and 1274, is that what the buildings look like?
Yes.
As they're built right now?
Yes.
So just the peaks are 1.9 feet higher and that's it?
On 12, on 1268, yes.
And what about 1274?
1274, they're, they're closer to four feet higher.
Doesn't the legal notice say 1.9 for each?
No.
Okay, I must've looked at the same one twice. But it's the peaks.
Correct.
Cause I, maybe for me it makes a difference in the sense of whether the four feet or the 1.9 is, you know, the, the drywall and sheetrock or what have you on the sides versus the peak.
No, yes, so it's, it's the slope peaks of the gable roofs on, on 1274 and it's a hip roof on the two towers of 1268.
And your intent on 1280 is to, I'm assuming go with the 36 that you're at to make all the buildings even?
We, we would make it, um, when, when measuring the building, again, it's the four corners of the building, um, we would, we would make sure that it is compliant with the zoning bylaw as written. So it can be with, under the four corners, the average of the four corners would be under 35 feet. That would be my intent. That would be my intent.
To correct the issue of just the peaks is hundreds of thousands.
Yes, because they're truss roofs, you can't just, you can't just take a saw up there and cut them. And, and I would say I would not want to just flatten the roofs. It wouldn't look right. It would change the character of, of what we're talking about.
Do you recall how much public comment from neighbors and abutters you had on the issue of the height?
Back in the planning board?
Yeah.
There were two or three abutting, abutters at the time, uh, bringing that up. But there's not, you know, there's not that many abutters across Osgood Street.
Right, no, a lot of it's businesses. Really expensive mistake. Did you figure out how the error happened?
Yes, I, I outlined it, uh, at the beginning of this discussion.
No, but I mean, okay.
Yeah, I mean, the, the main, the main component was, was building sections not using two different CAD softwares that we've since completely migrated to a 3D modeling software, Autodesk Revit, but we're using AutoCAD and, and Revit. Multiple staff not properly coordinating the building section with the elevations. Is, was probably the main characteristic, the main issue. And, um,
Now, did 1268, 1274 go up at the same time? I, I haven't been keeping track down that end.
Yeah, they were built at the same time. The, the other aspect is really that the rear grade, the impact of the rear grades that were not probably properly calculated. And, and again, the rear, the rear grades at the rear side of the site are significantly lower than the front.
But isn't 35 feet up, 35?
It's the average of the four corners. So we're penalized by the fact that the rear of 1274 is seven feet lower than the front corner of 1274. It's a seven foot difference.
Yeah, let me, let me jump on a question I thought Alexander might be adding, because this is Ron Fagan, is I would have thought that 35 feet was measured from the foundation. Right? And so what you're saying is it's not measured from the foundation, it's measured from the average of, of the grades on corners.
Correct.
Why is it not measured from the foundation? Did I get it?
Yes, you nailed it right on the head. Thank you.
Uh, it's, it's the way I think building height's defined. It, I will say that building height can be defined in different towns in different ways. I, I have, there's some, some jurisdictions I've worked in, it, it's, it's the middle of the gable roofs, not the peak. Some of them, it's, um, you know, it's, it's just the front of the building, the public side of the buildings. I, I have, it, it has sometimes measured, you know, you have leeway in some cases, how far, uh, away from the building to, to make the measurement in terms of off the site. In some cases, it is the finished floor of the, the primary finished floor elevation. So the town of Andover has a, has a unique or, or there are one way of measuring building height that's not 100%. It's not, it's not a universal, um, criteria.
Okay, so could I, could I ask, you may not let me answer this question, it may be a dumb question, but the peak of the building, say the first one, 1268, how high is that from the foundation of the building?
Well, the foundation, are you talking about the finished floor or what do you mean by the foundation?
Well, at some, at some point, I think you, you put a foundation down to the ground. Right?
Right.
And so at that point, it really doesn't matter what the corners are, what the grade of the corners are, the foundation is going to be level, I would assume.
Well, so to me, yes, I mean, you are, the top of the foundation is level. And then the, the surrounding grade slopes depending on what's going on with the site.
So do you know, and this may be totally, you know, non-Germain, but from the peak of the building to the top of the foundation, do we know what that height is right now?
I'll tell you, hold on, I'll pull up a document that you also have the, I believe that the, the certif, the certification, um, that the civil engineer surveyor created.
Who turned them in with being too high?
I think it did himself.
That's silly.
I mean, so, so it, it varies, it varies again, you know, it, it's on building 1274. on building twelve seventy-four, it's, it's seven feet lower than, than our, you know, so it's three and a half feet below. You know, at the right corner of building twelve seventy-four, it's, by my calculations, it would be thirty-one and a half feet at the right corner of building twelve seventy-four. And, and, and it'd probably be thirty-two and a half feet on the right corner of twelve sixty-eight. If you were talking about the front of the building. So, those, it's underneath the thirty-five foot building height in the front of the building. It's the rear of the building that throws us over. And the rear of the building isn't even visible from the public right of way.
Can I say something? Paul, Paul Hutchins, can you give us the definition of what, of what we're looking for from, from where the thirty-five feet is measured? You're the building inspector, you're the enforcement agency. What is the definition of where we should be looking? From the foundation or from the topography of the land ball?
It's the average of the four corners of the finished grade.
So, so it's not of the foundation, it's of the finished grade?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alan. I'm hoping that I can revisit, actually, actually, two things if I could. We have a building two and a building three and a twelve sixteen and a twelve seventy-four. Can you match them up for me? Which address is building three and which is building two?
Building two is twelve sixty-eight. Building three is twelve seventy-four.
Thanks very much. And I heard you estimate that the, that the cost to facilitate the matter in order to be in compliance for building three was between two and three hundred thousand dollars. How about for twelve sixty-eight?
You're probably fifty thousand dollars.
All right. And then I, I follow that up because that, look, that, that sounds like the top end of a building hundred and fifty, that's three hundred and fifty thousand dollars is an awful lot of money to me. I guess I would, I would need to know in order to find potential hardship, the, the, the project cost here. Like, the total hard and soft cost for this entire project is what-ish?
Millions of dollars, so it's, you know, for each bill, separately on each building, or?
Project cost, because this is, this is, this is a project, not just a bill.
Right, right.
Whole thing that you're doing.
You know, again, there's two, there's two, two other buildings that have yet to be built, but, yeah, I mean, we're talking, you know, six million dollars or something for what you, what you see today, or something.
Six million dollars, and that, that's your estimate of the entire project, hard and?
No, I mean, probably more, more than that if, if you add building one and four, which are yet to be built.
Yeah, so, so look, that's what I'm asking for, I was trying to be specific at the beginning. I need a, the big number. This project is going, is cost so far in, or is going to cost what?
Okay, so just say ten million dollars.
All right, thank you.
How was the error discovered? Maybe I missed this because I'm, it's a hard thing to wrap my head around a mistake of this magnitude on, obviously such a massive project. Was this discovered by the building inspector?
No, Paul?
No. On every building, we ask for an ASBIL before we give certificate of occupancy. That gives us location on the property and the heights. Mark came to me and realized his error when he got it back from his engineer on the certified ASBIL, saying it was too high.
So, you would have picked up on it even if he didn't say anything?
Yes. Well, because, because we would get this ASBIL.
Right, so you would see the ASBIL.
Yep, this is required before we can give occupancy.
But, and, I mean, Paul, we, we've had conversations too. It, it's, because it's the peaks of the roofs, it, it's not something anyone visually picked up of like, ooh, this looks too tall.
I would never pick it up by the eye, to be honest, there's no way. The way this building is located on this site, it's, no one's going to pick up on two luxury roofs on the restaurant at one point nine. And the other one, the way this building sits, there's no way anybody could do it by the naked eye. I've done this most of my life, and there's no way I could even pick up four feet from the naked eye.
And I'm assuming the peaks on both the buildings are hollow? It's not like a storage now, or an attic space, or?
They're, they're attic, attic spaces with sprinkler systems and, yeah.
But not something that's used?
There's no, no use, there's no, you know, there's no occupiable space. It's, it's, you know, sprinkler systems, just, just hollow, yes, like hollow roof elements or attic spaces. And, so the, you know, the modification is, is still difficult because they're, you know, they're three dimensional objects. And it could be, we could flatten them off, so to speak, but it, it would, you know, significantly change the character to do so.
Paul, Paul, can I suggest that we all have a site visit and take a look at this in person? So, we can understand what's going on about the modifications that we're talking about? I think a site visit would be appropriate.
A site visit wouldn't benefit me. I think especially if, if our building inspector is saying that he's been doing this his whole life and he's not going to notice, I'm sure, I'm sure not going to notice.
I did show, I included some site photographs. So, there's some real photographs there that also show the, show the elevation differences between the building. I mean, and, and the street. There's particularly a, a side view showing the retaining wall on the front. You know, that, that really dropped the site elevations down. And, you know, I do feel that this, this makes, this is extremely unique site. Can't think of any other site that I know of in North Andover where there's that kind of grade difference of, of the, the base of the buildings versus the public right of way. And, and, you know, there's, there'd be, in measuring building heights, I've often, often seen too, it's, it's sometimes measured from, from the public right of way. But, you know, but, but certainly, again, with the combination of it's the rear, the rear of the buildings which aren't visible from the public right of way, and the site differences from Osgood Street to, to the fronts of the buildings, it, there, there's no adverse effect.
Hi, it's Frank Killway. Mark, did, did this go through a design review process with the planning board? And if so, were these, were, were these buildings and these elevations? I mean, I don't mean.
They, they were schematic.
I don't mean great, final, you know, grading elevations and, and the elevation of top of the roof, but was, was the design reviewed by the, the planning board? And what you built, was that similar to what was reviewed by them?
Yes, we, we had schematic elevations, but they were not, you know, not, not buildable plans, but they, they, they looked at the character of it and, and saw the, you know, it's largely a very similar looking project, but they did not have.
So, this, it seems like this is just a result, though. So, you, you, you built what they wanted you to build, you just, this is just a result of the, the grading of the site that was probably detailed as you moved on in the design process, right?
Correct.
It's a, if, if this height difference had occurred, you know, on many other projects, it wouldn't be an issue at all if the, if, if the bylaw, you know, if, if the difference in this elevation wasn't exceeding the, what, what we have in our bylaw. So, for instance, if you were designed to thirty feet and instead it was thirty-one feet, there, there'd really be no, no impact. This, it just happens to be because we're right at the threshold of the height allowed in the bylaw.
Correct. I think, I follow you.
Yeah, sorry, I was kind of rambling. I mean, I, I've run across this on many projects in lots of different towns where I've done projects, they, they, it seems like every town has a different definition of how they measure building height. And, and some of them need some interpretation. So.
So, I have a question about, about the history on, on the town with exceptions of this nature. Are there any precedents out there that, that we should be aware of in considering this situation? So, are there any precedents out there?
Is that for Paul, or?
Well, I mean, I, I, I didn't address it to anyone, but Paul Hutchins, you may be the, you, you would be the closest to this. Is there any precedence that we should be aware of in conjunction with this review?
Not that I'm aware of. There was a height increase for the buildings out back, those are pretty tall, those are fifty-five feet. Like you said, with the way this land shows and what they are asking for, it, it fits in, but, you know, like I said, we go by the ASBILs and that's what picked this up. So, I can't change anything on that, that's why it's before you. It was a, you know, he did make a mistake, he came right to me and said, what do we do? And I said, there's two options, we go, we go lop it off, we go before the board, and that's why we're here, so.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Steve, did you mean precedent in North Andover, or, or, or anywhere, because?
No, and I, my, I mean, so for me, I was just thinking within our town because obviously, in the case that we did grant the variance, then what goes through my mind is, well, now that, does that become a, I'm going to say an opportunity for someone else to create a situation and ask for variance? And, and, and so I'm not, those are just the things that are going through my mind. So, I was wondering if there was any, any factual things that we need to know, and obviously there's not. So, I was just thinking about our town, thank you.
Steve, I'll, I'll jump in for a second so that we can kind of perhaps drill into what precedent might mean for something like this. The, I, I, I think I'm hearing you ask, is there a practical precedent? Has this really ever happened before? How is it dealt with? And then the second is legal precedent. You know, would the zoning board be bound by something like this? In other words, if, if the zoning board allowed a self-imposed hardship to qualify as a, a hardship and for grant a variance, if another application comes along with a self-imposed hardship, would we have to grant that? The answer is, we have the, every, for a, really a case like this.
Paul, Paul, this is Alan. I totally agree with you, right? Somebody can create their own hardship. So, could we maybe find the person? I mean, could we grant this and fine him for doing something wrong? And the fine would go into the coffers of the town in North Andover? We could speak to the selectman and see what appropriate fine would be? That way, the next guy wouldn't be so quick to do it. I, I agree with what you said, Paul, that if we allow this, who's to stop the next guy from doing it? But if we impose the fine, the next guy would say, whoa, they fined him, let's not get involved with that.
Yeah.
Would that be, would, would that be the alternative?
To be honest with you, Alan, I, I don't know the technicalities of that. You know, can we, can we, and still allow the, the variance? So, I, I, I don't know, I don't know that there's necessarily power to fine, I think the, you know, the max is like, and that could be like a, if there were even a fine offense in here.
Okay, excuse me, Paul, Paul, can I ask, ask the applicant, excuse me, ask the applicant, would you be willing to pay a fine, or some kind of financial consideration, okay, for this variance? Okay, because I told you, if we allow this, who's to stop the next guy from doing the same thing? So, if we put a punishment on it, it's going to not make us so attractive. So, would you be willing to pay a fine, for, for lack of other words?
It's a different, you know, honestly, it, that's a difficult question to answer because it's, it's like, you know, in theory, yes, but also like, you know, anyone would answer like, how much, you know? And, and what, what is the penalty? I, I'm sincerely embarrassed to have to come in front and do this. This is not at all, again, an intentional act. But I will, I, I'd like to add that in, you know, I, I've, I've been at this profession thirty-five years, so many, many zoning variances in different, many different states and jurisdictions. There, the thing, every, every property is unique. So, the, the idea of precedence is, is always a concern. And, and I, I thought about that and, and feel that, you know, it, it's always a concern for any governing body of, of setting the wrong type of precedence. At the same time, every, every variance, every site is, is, is to be viewed in, from everything I've heard and learned on, on the uniqueness of their own condition. And so, so it's not an, there's no automatic precedences in, in something like this. And, and as we discussed and, and clearly view this site and these conditions with, with the, in, in the end of the day, the, the judgment is, does it remain in harmony with the purpose and intent of the zoning bylaw? And, and that gives significant leeway and, I'd say, subjectivity to, is this site unique? Is this condition unique to, to the, the zoning bylaw? The, the purpose and intent of the zoning bylaw, is it in harmony? And, and again, the fact that the site elevations are significantly lower than the street, than the public right of way, the whole viewpoint, the experience of it, the, you know, is there also any detrimental, any adverse impact on a butter's? We're not, we're not blocking sunlight, we're not, we're not blocking, you know, there's no detriment to any abutting properties, and I would say the community as a whole. This project is in character. Paul said it himself, he would not know that this was a height variance. We, we, we do have one because we have licensed surveyors who determine the peaks of roofs. But, but again, the, the, every zoning variance I've been in for, for decades has that same clause of, does this remain in harmony with the purposes and intent of the zoning bylaw? And that's really what we're reviewing today. And this is, and I don't think it sets precedence to another property because they, they would have to have that, a very significant, you know, situation like this elevation grade difference between the public right of way and the view, the experience of it. And.
I think what, I think what some of the board members are, are looking at.
I think what, I think what some of the board members are, are looking at more is the aspects of if a company comes in and says, oops, we, you know, use this software instead of this software and there's a miscommunication. And, you know, we built a five feet higher than we're supposed to. Because that ultimately, I understand the situation you're having in terms of the grade difference and the averaging of the four corners. But at the end of the day, the simple answer is, someone made a mistake. Someone didn't cross the Ps and dot the Is. And yes, I know our board has said numerous times, we don't set a precedent. But I, at least for me, I know that it is hard to sit here and, and go with the idea of I'm making, you know, decision A on this, but if another one comes in, I'm going to make decision B, just because I look at them, you know, they're two different applications. So I think that could be part of the, what the board's seeing is you had to deal with the grade, but we as the board is having to deal with a mistake, honest as it may be. It was, it's not a grade issue, that's, it's a mistake that was made. I will say, one of the things I've been looking at is the things, the documents that were submitted to planning. And I can't find a side view of, of the buildings. So you provided to us the side view of what is there now. But I can't find anything that shows the side view that was presented to the planning.
There was not one, yes.
You guys didn't provide anything that showed what a side view looked like in terms of the roofs and the peaks.
Not the planning, no, no.
Did you submit it to anybody?
We did, I mean, you have elevation, you have all four elevations of both buildings in the application, did it?
Right, because what I'm, what I'm looking for is I have, I'm looking right now at the elevation grade difference. And if I have this correct, looking at twelve sixty-eight and twelve seventy-four, that is exactly how these roofs look as they stand today.
Yes.
What I'm looking, I guess I'm surprised that you didn't have to submit anything to planning. That you just showed bird eye view of the building.
We had, we had a front elevation. Planning does not require, it's mostly site, site plans and density and, but, you know, potential use and we had a front elevation is all that planning asked for and received. And it was schematic.
But you guys would have had to, and I'm, I say had to in the sense of I'm naive on this, you would have had to have had sketches done or schematic something done to show what the side view. I basically want to see, what did you guys plan to do? And what did you end up with? And it sounds like there is no, this is what we were planning to do image.
The front elevations that the plant, that I was submitted to planning was, you know, a conceptual, concept of what we were planning to do. The, the client did not hire us at that early stage to, to, to fully design the building.
So basically, the only thing I have to look at is, what, the permit, site plan, proposed mixed-use development that was originally done, I don't even know where the date is on this, that was originally done when it got put in front of planning in two thousand eighteen.
Again, we, I mean, I could, I could pull up front elevations that were submitted. You know, to planning.
I mean, do you get what I'm looking for? I want to be able to, to put, I mean, and when things come in front of zoning, we're obviously getting images, whether it's, you know, pretty ones or just stenciled ones. We're getting an image of what something looks like from a side view.
Yeah, and, and planning doesn't require it, and it's not usually, you're not usually presenting all four corners. Sometimes somebody might, but.
And I'm not looking for the four corners. I'm looking for the exact same view that you're showing on the top of the elevation grade difference that you submitted to zoning. I want to see that angle. So if that's the front, I want to see the front of what was supposed to be.
Okay. I mean, I, I don't think I can share the screen, right? But there is, there was a front elevation showing, I mean, to planning, but you know, again.
I mean, I'm not finding it. Maybe I'm not as tech savvy as I thought I was.
My application, I'm sorry.
No, I'm, I'm looking on planning. I'm actually looking on planning and not finding it.
Right.
And I understand if you don't have it. I'm just, I'm a very visual person, so visually seeing what was supposed to be and what is. I guess is what I'm looking for. And I'm not finding that on, on anything that's in planning.
Department, yeah.
Well, I don't think the town should be in the business of punishing developers trying to improve the town. Can I suggest that maybe?
That's not fair to look at it that way.
No, our intent is not to make North Andover an unbuildable town. Okay, okay, that's the last message that we want to send out.
Trust me. We made North Andover very much a buildable town.
Okay, a man made a mistake or a company made a mistake, Paul, what do you think about, maybe you should sit down with the planning board and the board of selectmen to see if we can resolve this somewhere where all the selectmen, the boards and the applicant, where we can do this without punishing the applicant in any future development that may come down the pike.
The way, Alan, the way, Alan, to solve this is for, you know, the board of selectmen or the planning board or there could be a citizen's petition put forward changes to the zoning laws such that this, this would be in compliance, so raise it to forty feet or raise it to forty-five feet or something like that. That would certainly be a solution. The, where I struggle is, the applicant's already done that, Alan. The applicant has already written its own zoning for this parcel and then didn't even follow with the zoning that it wrote parcel. So I've got, the town shouldn't be in the, in the business of punishing developers for improving the town. That's something I agree with. The town also should not be in the business of allowing developers to have their say the entire way. So I, I mean, like, here we are. The, the second for this, I, look, the applicant is welcome to do whatever it wants with the town. I think that where we are tonight is sitting at the zoning heels with an application for a couple of variances. And so that's, that's the angle that we need to take. Everything else, I believe, would take an extraordinarily long time. The, the, look, each of us has the things that we're most interested in. And I have heard loud and clear from Mr. Yanowitz. And I agree with just about everything that he has said, because we've got to make findings and he has hit a bunch of the findings that we need to make. You know, that there is a soil, soil shape or topography issue here because there is, there is some variation in the grade. We've heard that there are, this affects the land or structures of that parcel, but not the generally the zoning district. Totally agree. He said that a literal enforcement of the provisions would involve substantial hardship. That's why I'm wrapped around the axle. We'll come back to that. And that desirable relief granted. So you allow these variances without substantial detriment to public good and without nullifying or substantial interrogating from the intents of the bylaws. I think that Mr. Yanowitz has, my estimation, certainly have, certainly a board of more than just myself, he has nailed those. The one that I, that I'm struggling with, and I can't dispute it because we have to make a finding of hardship. What I'm struggling with is that there is hardship here. If I am to take the applicant's numbers, and we can certainly ask Mr. Hutchins, you know, just kind of give them a smell test. If we take the high end, three hundred for building three, if we take fifty thousand for building two, that's three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, project is estimation here from the applicant, and I have no reason to challenge it. Because that's a ten million dollar project. Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in project is three and a half percent. Let's take the low end of the applicant's suggestion, which is two hundred, fifty is two fifty, take the low end, half percent. If an applicant came to this fifty thousand dollar addition to their house and said, oh, I blew it, I got to spend another thousand dollars, approximately what, three, three and a half percent? I'd laugh him out of the room. And like, you're coming to the board because of a thousand dollar problem, a ten thousand dollar problem before the board. I get it that the scale of the absolute dollars, three hundred, sounds like an awful lot. That would crush my household budget. If I'm doing a ten million dollar project, that three hundred and fifty thousand dollars is not nearly as crushing. Is it a big number? Oh, you betcha. I would be, I would not be pleased with this. But I've got to find, we have, we collectively have to find, I'm not there frankly, we've got to find the hardship. And three and a half percent on the high end, two and a half percent on the low end, boy, that's certainly not triggering substantial hardship to me. I can't make that myself, with the balance of the board. Myself can't find my way to saying substantial hardship equals two and a half percent. Just, I can't get there.
Again, that ten million, understand too, is, is the total project. It's not, you know, the two buildings in question are, you know, roughly half of that or something. But again, the result, yet we could make it compliant again and but you're greatly changing the character of what the buildings look like. And then, and, and that, I think that comes, should come into play. You're, you're altering the character and making it a more, an awkward-looking structure at this stage.
But I, I, I don't have a finding there. Like, I don't have, I hear you loud and clear. Like, I agree with you loud and clear that this might make things look different, and it might make things look as that the planning board or the applicant wasn't intending. Totally get it. And that doesn't equate to substantial hardship. I still have to make that finding. There are five or six findings in there. You nailed it, Mr. Yanowitz. You nailed four of the five findings. It's that fifth finding, because it's a whole bouquet, you can't just pluck, in this, in this case, you can't just pluck one of them out and say, oh, the rest of them carry the day. We've got to make all of those findings.
I understand. And I don't know at what point that, like, how do you, you know, at what point the hard, the financial hardship is, is real and more significant. Obviously, i- if I'm admitting fault or error to you on, you know, on public record, you know, so it's, the hardship's my firm, you know, and my, you know, my, of course, professional liability. So it's, the developer's not the one.
The developer's not paying for the redo. You are.
Yeah, he's not paying to redo this. So.
So that three point five percent to the developer looks like chum change, but to a firm, it's massive.
It puts us down, yeah. It, it, we may not survive.
Mr. Yanowitz, is there any insurance coverage with this?
I'm sorry?
Is there any insurance coverage with this, with errors and omissions?
It probably would not cover that, no. Not in under errors and omissions. Because it would go under professional liability and, you know, we'd not get another policy probably.
Can I ask?
I'd consider that hardship, but I'm sorry?
Mike, can I ask a question? So you're, you seem to want to say that this isn't affecting the neighbors, but is there, do we have anything that they're saying that this doesn't affect them? I'm thinking that they weren't pleased to have this in the first place, so are you acting on their behalf because they told you, or do you have something in writing that it won't affect the neighbors?
The neighbors have been notified. It, you know, I, I've, I've talked to a couple of the neighbors who I mean, I've heard positive things about the project, but, but no, there, there's been no, I don't have a written statement in support of it. But we don't have any written statements that, that are opposed to this application either.
Your statement is not correct that it's no, no adverse effect to the neighborhood, because you don't know either way, how they feel.
Well, I mean, I, again, I've talked to neighbors that, that have been notified and, and, and live across Osgood Street. But so I'd say, and I have not heard anything negative.
I'll say this, if, if the building inspector isn't noticing by eye, and I'm not to put anything on to neighbors, I can't imagine a non-professional eye would notice the difference.
Alex, I don't think it's more of the noticing, it's the fact that if they had objection to it in the beginning, it's like, oh, see? They can't even build this properly. What else is going to happen? So I don't want to have a taste with your, you know, with the neighbors and the surrounding neighborhood.
But yeah, in my memory, they didn't object to the project, at least. I, they were concerned about the visibility factor of, of the taller towers which received special permit to go, and I have the story, to be able to visually see across into their property. And they didn't want to see those towers either. That was, that was the concern that was raised. And they, they did, I did not hear them oppose to the commercial buildings in, in any capacity.
So no, for, for me, I would have, and I usually don't say my position before the vote, but for me, I would not so much have a problem, but be sort of okay with granting the one with built already, but not the one that's built already. So for me, that's a compromise saying, before you build the next one, you got to take that fifty dollar hit and fix it, but the ones that are built will allow it. So I feel that's a compromise.
And, and that was my intention to, to comply with, with the height requirement moving forward. And, and again, understanding that, that's the peaks of these roofs is what's in violation, but it would not happen again.
It would be the, the one that's two feet, one point nine is the ones that are already built and the one that's four is not built. Is that correct?
No, the one that four is built, there, there are two buildings that are built and they're both in viol, they're both in violation. Build, building twelve eighty was not built yet. And I was, I would make sure that it is, it is complying.
Okay, is that not going to look funny? I mean, you can't tell now if you have two buildings that are improperly height. But if you then put another building that's not going to be even, aren't you going to notice?
Understand that, where that bill twelve eighty has a higher elevation on site. The grade goes up, so if we make the building shorter, it would be more level. It could easily be balanced and, and not feel like it's a smaller component of the project, because the ground elevation is higher.
So along, along that line, I do think, okay, I, so I, what's been presented, I, I think is very good. And I, I think that there is a potential hardship around the unique physical property that is all of the, as it's been described to us, that, to me, that, that would be satisfactory as long as it, we would be able to shut down any, any other, you know, someone else trying to join and, and, and take advantage of the situation. But I do think that the physical property is a factor and that can be a hardship.
Steve, this Frank, you know, I've seen this similar things in other towns and I, you know, I know there have been some developers who intentionally, you know, added an extra floor. And that's, that's a real intentional thing they do and they get hit with it. And that's, that's a real intentional thing they do, and they get hit with it. But no, no developer would say, oh, let's try to get away with it because these guys did. It's, it's, it's too much of a risk relying that, you know, we might grant them a variance on on hard costs that they've already stuck into a project. So I I feel very, that there's very little risk that anyone's gonna look at this as a precedent and say, oh, we can go ahead and get away with it as well, unless they're really intentionally trying to, you know.
Okay.
Add another floor building.
Thank you, then that's, that is good. Then the, you are helping we, helping me with my concern. And I, I think that rather than looking at it, I mean, I'm not looking at it financially as a hardship. I'm looking at the lay of the land as the hardship.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll point out again, the way that they, the town asked to to measure building height. It's, the average of the four corners, not every town does that. But it's, it's, it's largely over the building height requirement because the rear of the, of the buildings is lower, significantly lower than the fronts of the buildings. So I would agree as well that the, the, the unique characteristics of the, of the site and and the lowering of the grades as requested by the planning board is a component of my hardship along, along with the financials.
Well, if the permitting process in the zoning code is a, it does qualify as a hardship, then we're gonna have an awful lot of applications coming before us. Nonetheless, with that said, anything else from the board, looking up and down the table?
I thought no more questions.
All right, catching a moment here, Jen, is there any public comment that's come in?
No public comment.
All right, comes to the board then, looking up and down the table. Anything else, applicant? Shall we close the public comment, move to deliberation?
I was just gonna mention that, that, you know, there, there was a special permit option for the residential towers to get, to go taller. But there was no special permit option for for me to address the building height and try to request a higher elevation. And so that is why we're in front of you as as a zoning variance. You know, the criteria is, you know, there, there are a number of points with Mr. Cott had identified, and I feel that that I have kind of justified the criteria for variance. And and most significantly, that we we do remain in harmony and purpose of the intent of the zoning bylaw. So I thank you for your time and consideration in this awkward situation.
Thank you very much. If nothing else from the board, then shall we have a motion to close public comment?
Go ahead, Alan, you got it.
No, no, again, Ron, you got it, go ahead.
I will move to close public comments.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Ron, seconded by Alan. We, since we're on a remote basis, we call the roll for every vote, everyone. We'll go up, we have all the, all the full members, so I'll go up. Ms. Jake?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, Ms. McIntyre.
Aye.
Mr. Kusia?
Aye.
Egan?
Aye.
And I am an aye. So the public comment has closed, and now the board shall deliberate. Who wants to open?
I'll open. First of all, I definitely appreciate the candor of the applicant. And this is a very, very unfortunate situation. From a practical matter, I do not see any harm with granting this variance. These buildings, you know, stand kind of on their own. It's not egregious. It, they're well below the road level. And so I do not think that it is necessary to put any of the parties involved in this building at a significant financial cost to remedy something which our own building inspector says he just couldn't tell anyway. So I I don't see this as being a big, a, a problem for the town.
Thank you, Ron. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'd like to say something. I think the way that buildings look now are aesthetically pleasing. I think the architect, when he drew the original plans, made for a puzzle looking building, it went through planning. And I think through some unfortunate circumstances with the four corners or whatever may be, a mistake happened. And I think if we asked him to spend a couple hundred thousand dollars and playing with the roofs, the buildings wouldn't look as pleasing as they do now. And it's a high traffic area, and I think we should keep them as aesthetically pleasing as we possibly could for all the cars to go back and forth from it, especially with the coming of Amazon going down the road.
Thank you, Alan. Anyone else?
You have, just a little torn with the, with the fact, I'm sorry, Mike. I'm just a little torn that this is the, you know, better to ask and give this some permission type scenario. And I understand mistakes do happen, but and this is a board where you come to, to fix it, to help with your mistakes or whatever it is that that needs to be done. But I'm just, I am struggling, like you, Paul. Where is the hardship? Is this your own self-created hardship? Is it, you know, the slope of the land? You know, hey, it's only two feet. Hey, it's only four feet. But I I'm just having a hard time with the not following, not, not, you know, being accountable. So that's, that's a big issue for me. And like Alex said, dotting your i's, crossing your t's, work done properly. So I I'm struggling, I'm struggling with that, which way to go.
I have to say, in terms of it being one of those situations where, you know, you take the risk, you take the chance, so on and so forth. I think, and at first, when Paul was talking numbers and percentage in terms of what the developer, when you look at the ten million dollar project of it, it is really hard for me to swallow, to think that if a situation like this were to be recreated, you're essentially having an architect company or whoever sit here and go, okay, I'm gonna take the risk that I can get away with this. The developer's not gonna be the one to get nailed for it. I will. And more likely than not, that would crush a business. Because this isn't a two thousand dollar hit that's getting paid out. Essentially, the company's having to pay out, you know, whether it be the company of their interns isn't covering it, someone's dishing out three hundred and fifty thousand, and it's not the developer. I mean, it's not the one who's spending the ten million bucks for this. So I think that's a really, really large gamble for anybody to to ever take in terms of being, you know, a smaller company. Because like I say, you're not, you're not getting the ten million dollar paying developer paying this.
I I think for me, it's, you know, strictly on, on the merits. I, I, I sort of side with Ellen's concern that it feels like this, you know, I I don't know if they have the the best pure case for why they're doing this. But on the flip side of it, it's just really hard for me to get worked up about a roof that is four feet too tall, that's next to an apartment complex that's twenty feet higher. And I grant, granted that setback from the road, but it's twenty feet higher. And that is on a major road, you know, one twenty-five is not like some small street. And it's surrounded by other businesses. And it's frankly quite spread out from all those other things, right? It's not, it's not right up next to another building. I I can imagine a, a place where, you know, someone built a, a house that was too tall right next to another house, and it, and it, you know, really looms over it, and you could have, and feeling very different about this. But this is something where it's, it's just hard for me to feel like those extra four feet ruin the landscape or do real damage. And 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 I I definitely appreciate the flip side, that it's not super clear that, you know, there's an obvious hardship that's not self-created in this. But but I I just can't get that angry about someone having a building that's a few feet too tall in this particular instance.
Yeah, I just want to add to Mike's comments. And and what I will add is, I would rather drive by and look at the structure as it has been built than reconfigured in four feet less. I think it, I think that to our town, that this is a more attractive option than having, than than enforcing the actual height and having it be lowered. So I I think aesthetically, this is better for our community.
Well, my guess is that if they have to lower it, they're basically, this is my guess, they're gonna basically just chop off the peaks, and instead of making it peaks, I don't know, make it flat. And, you know, I agree that that won't look aesthetically pleasing. I think for the board members who might be on the fence about this, I am reminded of a recent hearing we had where a gentleman messed with his bulkhead. And he basically messed with the stairs and built a little house over the bulkhead. Some of the members might remember this. And I looked at, that issue didn't come before us until he was looking to refinance, and the mortgage company found out that he didn't get permits for any of it. And majority of the board looked at that situation as, well, he would have come to us, and more likely than not, it would have been granted. Do we really want to put this guy through the trouble? Because it was, from his words, an honest mistake. He didn't realize, you know, the consequences of it. Do we really want to put him through the struggle of ripping it down and and re, you know, going the proper process? I was the only one who voted for him to rip it down. And he was able to keep it. And I I look at that situation as being more of a, you know, ask for forgiveness versus seeking permission than I do the current situation we're in. And in part, maybe that's because the financial stake of that applicant versus this one. So that was just something I was throwing out there for anybody who might be on the fence.
So I just, I guess I just want to give my point of view. I, I think it's a relatively minor variance. I can understand how the mistake could have been made. There's a lot of moving parts when they're designing the grading. And I I think that the slope and topography of that site could easily be explained as the hardship for the project. And as far as the financial dollars go, you know, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we can look at that a whole bunch of different ways. If you look at it as a, as a percentage of the total budget, you know, it it may not seem like a very high percentage. But, you know, the way they cover that cost isn't, you know, just one number. They usually have a loan for a certain amount and equity and investors for certain amounts. And you look at it a percentage of the, even if the developer had to pay it, the percentage of the investment that the developer had made, it's a much higher percentage. So I I think in those terms, it probably does represent a significant impact to the budget of the project. And if it's coming from the architect, it's certainly even more significant. So, you know, I think the project looks better as is. I think the error is fairly insignificant. And I think there's a, a good case for hardship. So I would be supportive of it.
Thank you, Frank. Anyone else? All right, then, I was looking, I've kind of said it before, but we've all kind of offered our, our summation. This is, you know, there's, there's no, there's no anger in me about this. This is absolutely an, an accident. I I hear that loud and clear. It's absolutely a good project. I agree, it looks terrific. It's certainly better than the wasteland that it was before. It's absolutely a much more productive use of that land than it was before. And I think it's gonna be even more productive as the town grows up in that direction. The applicant even noted Amazon coming along, they're gonna have some employees imported, what I imagine, they're gonna want to be work carrying their, uh, living in the area. So all of those things are positive. The things that we've talked about, how minimal the, the violation is, again, I agree one hundred percent that I, Paul Hutchins, you know, the, the, probably the most professional of the professionals on this call, aside from the applicant himself. If Paul couldn't see, thinks he wouldn't be able to see the difference, I know that I wouldn't be able to see the difference. Would, would the variances kind of, you know, violate the balance of the, the neighborhood of the community at large? Or, you know, be an insult to the zoning code? No, these variances would not be. Where, what I I struggle with is what we have repeatedly addressed in our deliberations in the past is the, the self-created nature of this. This isn't an example of, of a bulkhead where maybe a guy didn't, didn't know. This isn't an example where, you know, a guy, maybe I'll cheapen out an additional floor. This is a project that wrote its own zoning, presented it at a town meeting, and it flew right through. This project wrote the zoning code, then didn't follow it. And is now here, years later, saying, you know, whoops, made a mistake. Can you, can you help me out? And I I I hear everybody loud and clear that this is, this is a big number. If somebody said, hey, Paul, come up with your hundred fifty thousand, be able to do it tomorrow, that's for sure. But if somebody said, hey, Paul, you better come up with your hundred fifty thousand dollars, I'd run to the bank and get a, get a loan and be paying a few thousand dollars a month and would would somehow find my way to being accountable for that. And no, again, I have no anger, and it sounds like the way that the board is gonna be going, you know, to, in favor of granting the variances here. I'm just, so I'm just kind of saying out loud, project wrote this zoning, and then this project didn't follow its zoning. And that is, that is like picture book, self problem. And then the, you know, the, the number, yes, did I go big with the project cost of ten million? Yes, because this is a holistic thing. You could get the rug guy to come in here, the carpet guy to come in and say, man, that, that'd bury me because my contract was worth a hundred thousand dollars. So I'm gonna way lose money on this. And and, yeah, I get it, but this is a project. This isn't just an architect. This isn't just a G C. This isn't just the roofer. This is the entire, and those were just the hard costs. We've got the, you know, soft costs here, the architect and, and the, and legal. So all of that is in there, and this is a small number in comparison to the project budget. You know, there, there are statistics in there, damn statistics, I, I totally get it. And I need to look at this holistically. There, the balance of the board may be looking at this far more specifically. And I, I totally get that and take no, you know, take no truck with it. So anyway, I'll, I'll, I'll shut up, say that's very hardship of an applicant who wrote its zoning, because not the applicant here, but the project, wrote its zoning and then didn't follow it. And is now here to say, you know, my bad, can you, can you let me off the hook? I'm not certain that that's the message that I want to send, particularly since I can't find hardship because it is self-created. Nonetheless, with that, I'm guessing that we should move to, unless, and anything else from the board? Again, looking up and down the table, anything from the board? Other, we'll entertain a motion.
I just want to add, Paul, I'm being redundant with this one, but it's a matter of looking at it, if it's not tampered, it looks better to me than it would look after the expense and the restructuring of it. So I, there's another element, there's a personal element to your argument that I wanted to share.
Thank you, thank you, Steve. Looking up and down the table, anything else from the board? Then perhaps, Mr. Clerk, I think you are up.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion, I'd like to make a motion to grant a variance for the petition of Mark Yanowitz, L Y F Architectural Property at twelve sixty-eight Osgood. L Y F Architectural Property at 1268 Osgood Street, MAP 34, Apostle 49, North End of Mass, to grant a variance for two of the town on North End of a zoning bylaws, section 195-7.4B and section 195-7.4F, building height in the B2 zoning district for the purpose of allowing a pre-existing commercial building to remain unchanged as the building height specifically. Applicant is requesting a relief variance of 1.9 feet. The existing building height is 36.9 feet. The building height required is 35 feet. We'll do these one at a time, Paul? Paul?
Paul, you're on mute.
Am I on mute?
Boy, what a dope, I'm sorry, guys. Yeah, I think we should do them one at a time, one at a time, Alan, and, you know, this was just in accordance with the plans and materials submitted. And and Jen will list them, and I'll certainly confirm them. So that's, that sounds like the motion is made. Is there a second?
I will second.
I'll second.
All right, Ron got in there, so Alan made the motion, Ron seconded, I will go up the roll. Alexandra?
Yes.
Ms. McIntyre?
Yes.
Mr. Kusia?
Yes.
Mr. Fagan?
Yes.
I am a no, so four to one, and the matter is approved. Shall we move on, Mr.?
I'd like to make a motion for the petition of Mark Yanowitz, L Y F Architectural Property at 1274 Osgood Street, MAP 34, Apostle 49, North End of Mass, 01845, in the B2 zoning district. I'd like to grant a request for a variance pursuant to town on North End of a zoning bylaws, section 195-7.4, building height in the B2 zoning district for the purpose of allowing a pre-existing commercial building to remain unchanged as the building height specifically. Applicant has requested a relief variance of 4.2 feet. The existing building height is 39.2 feet. The building height required is 35 feet. And I'd like to make reference of a plan that has been submitted. It doesn't say who, yeah, it does say from L Y Fasiets, McGrath Yanowitz. It's a second floor commercial interior. It's of site grade, and it's plan numbered C103 dated 31021.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you, am I still on? Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Kusia, motion made. Is there a second?
I will second. I will second.
That changed things. I'm sorry, every, motion made, was there a second?
Yes, there's a second.
Thank you very much, we'll go up the roll, motion made and seconded, go up the roll, Ms. Jacob?
Yes.
Ms. McIntyre?
Yes.
Mr. Kusia?
Yes.
Mr. Fagan?
Yes.
And I am a no, the motion passes, four to one. So, Mr. Yanowitz, thank you very much for your time and attention tonight. Very much appreciate your your efforts. And I think the board has said that it also very much appreciates your in the matter. So thank, thank you very much.
Thank you all again, and again, for having a special meeting on this behalf. But thank you for your time and consideration. I appreciate it.
All right, Ms. Yanowitz, thank you and good luck. Looks like the only thing left on the agenda, everybody, is to adjourn. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion.
I make.
I'm going to give that one to Alan, I think. Alan, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Heard Steve motion made and seconded, I will go up the roll, Ms. Jacobs?
Yeah.
Ms. McIntyre?
No, I want to stand a little longer.
All right, that's a no, Mr. Kusia?
Well, let me think about this, she may be right, you know.
My vote, no, yes.
No, no, I I vote to adjourn.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Fagan.
I vote to adjourn.
I am too, we have a vote of four to one to adjourn, Ms. McIntyre in the negative. Thanks, everybody.